Looking for that. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Joint North Bend City Council and North Bend Urban Renewal Agency Work Session for Monday, September twenty fifth. Um, at four thirty four in the council chambers. Um, after reading the or after calling the meeting to order, I will go ahead and open for public comment. Is there any public comment this evening?
There's not.
All right. Well, then that will go ahead and move us to item three. Which is our town square conceptual design presentation. And we have our main street manager slash. Other titles. I'll let you read your other titles.
I work with Urban Renewal Agency and the Visitor Information Center and Main Street. Those three areas is what I work on. Me too. You're gonna get this pulled up for us. I asked Ralph to um come up here with me as well because we've been working on this project for a while now. So I wanna make sure you shall have a hard copy in your packets. As well as online. So this is the corner of California and Sherman Avenue. And the future home of the Visitor Information Center. So we do have the bids out for the visitor center to get us up and operational to get that facility open and us move down there. That is phase one, which we budgeted for, and we have received the bids, and that will be later presented by Ralph. We then went to phase two, which includes the pocket park. The parking lot grading and the um move and the mercy box car. A prep friend pet friendly area, new bike racks, repair station, and restriping for the parking lot. So as you can see here, it takes up the whole corner. And uh, we have budgeted for that, and we are actively going after grants to help offset the cost of that. Phase three will be public restrooms, which is right over here up around by Grant Circle. And uh EV charging and then a mural on this south wall down here that says mural wall will be phase three. So I wanted to show this to you. Um, there's some aspects on this that have been council gold, such as the pocket park. And the I heart North Bend sign has been mentioned as well. So I just wanted to let you see this and review it and get some feedback from you.
Okay. All right, council, what do you think?
I think it's awesome. I'm curious about the number of EVs compared to the number for just cars. And I think there's still some street. Parking.
Yes, there's um all the parking around Grant Circle, and then we do own a parking lot. On the south side of the Visitor Information Center over here off of Union. So that's an additional parking that's close by.
So this will be the only EV that we have so far.
That the city, the city would have, yes.
The. Obviously Safeway has one, we have potentially one at the Sizzle it where the Sizzle is located. Um, and the layout here is. It takes up a little more room because it's a level three. As laid out here, level three charging stations have great big transformers and electrical power, and they take a little more room. That doesn't mean we're gonna do that. Uh, that's a lot more expense. Uh, but the layout is based on a level three charging station, which is what's at Safeway.
Mm hmm. And you can see the train car up above is the mercy box car, which is down at the current visitor center. Which is very hidden, so this would put it on display since it's the only one in Oregon. So that's a huge uh tourist attraction and historic piece that we. Are excited to be able to feature a little bit better than it is now. And then the pocket park also has a step up stage for any entertaining music. We'll have electrical and a built in um. Bench, and then we'll have some picnic tables as well.
Okay.
It's just kind of a rough draft, right?
It's just a very conceptual.
And I know that there's different funding streams that this is coming through. So for the council and those who are watching, can you remind um the uh everyone how this would be funded?
Well, like I said, we're actively going after some grants. There's some specific grants for pocket parks um and then overall project. Uh, so some uh TLT dollars as well, and then this is urban renewal uh property also.
Cause I know that's probably one of the main questions that people will have is, you know, how how does how does it get paid for? And so the TLT stands for the.
Transient lodging.
Lodging tax. And um. The and as so and this is with the pocket park, then those spaces would also be um. This is not where camping would be allowed. This is not for overnight camping. They would, anybody who is parking there would have to. Um, comply with our camping ordinance.
Right. This is not one of your designated areas as of now.
Just. Making sure that people remember that.
EV funding. There's a myriad of different grants out there. You have a myriad of different ways to go. You can uh. Basically lease the space or give away the space and since companies uh will come in and develop the whole thing for you. They get the money. Um, uh, AV charging. Um, there are federal and state grants that will pay for seventy five percent of them. Uh, for level three. Um, level two, you can get pretty much seventy five percent funded, but you're only dealing with. Uh, level two is probably in the neighborhood of. Forty thousand dollars while level three is in the neighborhood of seventy eight hundred thousand dollars. Um. Again, depends on what use you would project or. Specific concern. Cause it takes three to four hours. To charge on a level two.
Right.
Is that. You don't get much turnover on a level two and even might turn into be a. Uh, local business parking for the day. Cause you gotta plug in your car for four hours anyway. Um, while. Level three is a thirty to forty minute charge and more turnover, but it's more costly. Uh, but that's. So the. And I think further also, we have a grant we're applying for on the. For phase two. Which is on tonight's agenda, or was that already? We applied to Travel Oregon.
We apply. We'd only uh go to council for the acceptance.
Right.
Um, and then there's also a technical assistance grant through Pacific Power that would assist us in writing the grant applications for. Level three chargers. Uh, the level three chargers, um, depending as Ralph said, uh, the mechanism. If we go after and we invest to put it in, we get to charge for the power. So it would be the U R A making the money. Um, versus if we went out and had a partner come in and maintain it, uh, they make any of the money for utilizing those. And so uh, there's different streams. The um, the feedback's important because um, the next goal is to head towards um, phase two. Which means that we'll be drafting up bid documents to put um, that plan out on the street. So at this point, conceptual, but once we get to the bid document, um, we have to commit it into a bid document and move forward.
Well, so as I'm looking at this, I'm thinking about the goals that we had as a council um to. For downtown revitalization and to um, we. What this does is it creates a space for people who are coming into the community to stop um, park. Parking for the downtown, but also going into the visitor center, all businesses in North Bend can have information there.
Yes.
And so it really supports not just the main street, but all of North Bend and the South Coast. It's got green space, which is really important as we think about our um redevelopment. The pocket park idea, I would guess, and there would be like a benches and, you know, that sort of thing. Um. The stage area then also it creates a place to gather. And so when um, you know, if you have your special events in this, you can really kind of create a town square down there and. You don't have parking during cer- certain times, and if you're having festivals down um in this area. Um, it's got, you know, just again, another place for people to gather and to um shop locally here in our town. And then continue to get information where they can visit all of North Bend. So I really like the design. I'm really glad that you included. You know, the the train car is something that's so unique to our area. And it's, I mean, it's. It's almost like it was built for this. So it's a neat set of circumstances that that became available. The visitor or the. Um, old building there became vacated and um and and also that it's right on one oh one. It's like all of those things are really perfect to see from the road. You see people all the time getting out and um taking pictures in front of the mural. Um. And so this is another thing, you know, the I heart North Bend could be I just that iconic sign that people stop in our town and um. And get out of their cars and and walk around and spend money in our community, but it's also something for our local um. Residents to enjoy, you know, like this is the sort of thing I can see like the. Football team taking their picture behind that sign, you know, for the yearbook and things like that. So it's not when I talk about like, these are great for people to visit and enjoy these sort of things. Um, it's also something that I think will become iconic for everybody else in town. And it looks like a restroom with two stalls and a bike rack as well. So those were all great things.
And that placement of the restroom is just east from the police station. So it's very visible from City Hall and the police station, and then centrally locate located between Grant Circle. And the corner. Um, as you've seen, the last year, we've done a lot of um community building and gathering with. The Grant Circle really paying off that, especially our Christmas event. So this is just gonna elevate that to the next level and give opportunity, as you said, for all of North Bend to come together and uh enjoy that space.
Mm hmm.
If.
Yeah.
If we were to choose to uh. Own and and get the fees from the charging, how does that mesh with? The part of our or part of our code where we can't.
Charter amendment. Uh. We lease electricity or rent it uh potentially. I'm not saying that that's. We'd have to figure that out. The.
We don't have to know the answer. I was just curious of your initial thoughts for that.
The rate of return on it, it would probably be about a five year payback. Uh.
What kind of payback?
Five years.
Oh, five year payback.
On the city's portion, assuming we're funding. Twenty five percent.
Yeah.
Twenty five percent. Uh. Our best guess. At. Uh. You get about thirty dollars a vehicle to fully charge like a Tesla. Um, it's a full charge on a Tesla or something with current rates, which is about fifty cents uh. Which is a lot cheaper than filling your tank with gas, but you get a little more range out of. Um. A gas vehicle than you do a. Electric vehicle, but it's. Averages about thirty dollars a charge on what's out there right now.
I was just curious if we'd have to ask. Uh, it seems like we probably have to have a. Um, measure pass to charge, right?
This would be the U R A.
Oh, it's the, oh, okay.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, I would say this is our time for feedback, so.
The outdoor kiosk, cause I feel like I just wanna make sure I understand that.
Yeah, so it's um. Another one that we're looking at is a five foot tall freestanding um computer screen, basically that, you know, if we're not. At the visitor center or someone comes in all hours, we have information for them to direct them locally and all over Oregon with the information. It's a digitalized information booth, essentially.
And is that phase two or phase three?
We have that in phase, in phase two.
Okay, wow. Thank you.
Yep.
And so there um and. Pa- so the power, like I'm thinking ahead, there's clearly like power around. The train car area and the stage, and is that something that's just already built in the ground there? Is that something that would have to be installed?
That's all installed, yes. Yeah, we um, right here where the train car is, we actually need to build out the retaining wall. To house that unit because what's there right now is not big enough. So that would include a railing, so it would essentially be a lookout where you can see the bay, it's elevated up. And then it'd be dropped down to the stage. So that's gonna be up high, but when we do that retaining walls, then we would be pu- plugging in the power for the stage area.
So thinking, oh, sorry, Councilor, go ahead.
Um, I'm a little uh questioning the the placement of the train car. Because if there's a retaining wall there and such, I just think it's not, you're gonna be looking at the end of it from the parking lot. And looking at the end of a box car isn't necessarily the best view. And I'm wondering if somehow that could be so that people are looking at the. The like, you know, the total length of it somehow. I think that would be more inviting to encourage people to come over and learn about it. It it seems like it's kind of off to the side, and it's it's just an idea if it could be. Reoriented or maybe another place on the lot. It's that's my, that's my feedback on that.
It seems like the stage would be lower. It seems like somebody standing on the stage would. See the side of the train car.
There's nine feet of elevation difference between the building and Sherman Avenue. So basically, there's a series of retaining walls or stepped down.
Okay.
Uh. The train car would actually, what you see a little bit of landscaping adjacent to the building. That's the lower of the parking lot. A little bit about eighteen inches, cause right now it's steep for eighty accessibility. So it would be lowering the. The existing parking lot. A little bit. He'd have about a six foot. Step down to the stage. Uh, stage would be eighteen inches to thirty inches above the ground. Uh. So again, this is conceptual, but visualizing it, it's. You're gonna be below the, a little bit out of the wind on the stage and also below the uh.
And that's a four foot, uh, four foot walk around. Um, we can walk around the uh. Train car four feet around the whole entire thing. So it's it's own land up there. Mm hmm.
Yeah, it it because. The why I'm looking at this, thinking you're gonna have to redesign that. Just by the layout. I mean, I, I know it's inside, yeah, because I get all those EVs were parked in the middle. You couldn't get in and all those car stalls.
It is a little tight there. It's it's you're actually, the lines are following the existing, like which used to be fenced. Those EV parking spots are right where the fence used to be. So obviously, um. It was tight, but.
You don't have to back all the way out of.
Um, it's a little just, if it's going off the line, um, that was there now. They actually had a second row, those angled spaces going into the visitor center. They had a second row of parking right behind it. So we've eliminated that, giving more space. So it was real tight as it looks.
As it used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not, you're not driving out of it.
Yeah.
You know, just, it's an idea, I guess.
Yeah. And Councilor Noroff, Heather Yan Reese again.
Okay, so on the left side of the screen, we've got the parallel parking. How are those people going to get out without having to back all the way out toward the uh restrooms? Yeah, that's what they're saying. That's just.
So.
Sorry.
So.
Hard to hear.
No, that's that that's a good question. So if you notice the space behind, so part of, part of the um. As they say, this is a a engineering, you know, topo on the actual spacing. That car has the ability to back out and turn. And then go right. Um, in that amount of space. So when you look at the actual. Um, scale of those vehicles, they're not having to back out of there. They're able to actually come in angle. They'll be able to come back out and turn a little over the right. And then out. There used to be, as Stephanie says, two rows of parking. Which.
There's.
You know.
Well, how are they?
Worked effectively.
How are they getting out without crossing over the, he said they pulled this way and that there's, this is like almost an extra road. So is that why?
Yeah. Yeah, so right now, if you look at the my my cursor here, there's actually a second row of parking that goes like this. We're a limit, and so it is very tight right now, but we're taking out all of that. And then this line right here is where the um. Property line was where the fence was. We're actually giving more space than there is right now to get out of those spaces. It's just kind of hard to see on here, but. Yes, we went, when we drew this up, it's conceptual, but we also try to make sure that we look at the, you know, geographically and the. Dimensions and everything to make sure it's gonna work.
It looks really good on the RV parking.
Yeah, I'm very excited about that, yes.
Back out. We'll continue. Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, but this is um drawn to scale, so it's no different than when. They come, a business comes to us and has their parking lot planned, you know, you go by the engineering standards. And so. You know, you know, does that say that, you know, a three fifty or four fifty rig ought to be parking there? Absolutely not. Um, that's, that's where they need to park on the street side, on either side, but you also then have the additional spaces not shown. That's still out there. Um. That are right here. Uh, that go in. So for instance, like when my rig comes in and it's parked out here, you know, it takes up that full space, you know. But if I had like a three fifty or four fifty. I I need to either be in the spaces around Grant. Or I need to go on the street parking that I have either on California or Sherman. Um, when I've got a rig that big, or I've gotta slide into one of the RV, cause um. Uh, this is built for the majority of of standardized vehicles, but not, you know. There are places when I go where it's like, mm, wow, okay, boy, it's tight, but it's it's for, you know, the smaller cars and. You know, I'll hop out as the passenger alone, park the car, cause I ain't getting out otherwise. So I can't exactly go out the escape window. So um. But um Ralph can tell you what that turnaround radius is there. Um. I can't, cause I don't have one of his fancy rulers. But. Basically, the standard for a two-way lane to be able to back out is twenty four feet. So we'll maintain that. The RV spaces are forty feet in depth, and we ran. Uh. There's a standard, uh, which is a bus chassis, which they, a forty foot bus that they run. And there's turning radiuses and all, all that information available, which as we drew these, we threw on there to make sure that. An RV, a forty foot. Now, if a sixty, you know, sometimes they have trailers and all that, it may be a little tough. We're not gonna fit everybody, but.
Yeah.
The layout involves current standards for parking and that type of thing. Uh. It's a little tight with the one EV space with the. RV packing out, but.
Um, will this thing be open for parking before the um. Electric vehicle stuff gets finalized or what's what's the rollout? If 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 all the plans are in place, what if?
Council Jones, I was gonna ask that question, like if everything went smoothly and every grant was awarded with the. Red ribbon around it, and it's just played right out, like what would be like your dream timeline?
We're living a two, two. To three years for full build out. We have to regrade the parking lots. We have to have the monies to. Do that initially, whether, and obviously, if you're doing EV, you're gonna wanna do any con conduit and drainage, whether we're doing that later down the road, we have to preplan for it. Um. And. We're not using any. General fund or property tax dollars on this, so it's strictly. TLT. Grants, U R A money. Or private. Private funding, so. Uh, it may take realistically four to five years to be complete. Um. Phase two, phase three is the EVs actually, and. Public restrooms. Uh, the mural, so. You know, our. If everything worked out, we're probably still two years away, but realistically, we're three to four years away, probably.
Um, would we open it? Like, would we open it for RV and regular parking? Even though we don't have EV left, or is that?
People are using it right now, regarding downtown parking. Uh. The minute we. You know. We'll have to maintain, we'll have the visitor center open, one of the things that is gonna be an issue unless we. Cause if we have to regrade the parking lot to level it out for the box car. And have an ADA parking for the visitor center. Because right now that law's about six or seven percent ADA, it can't exceed two. Uh. Can be an issue if we don't get funded or do some work. And our visitor center, should it be awarded the remodel, the co- construction completion dates. April first.
Of this year, okay.
Uh, no, twenty twenty four, but.
April first.
The closest April first.
The closest April, this. And I, and that's, that's the good news is that um, that it, the space can still be utilized. Obviously, you know, and as the visitor center opens, you know.
Right.
I'm imagining other things and activity that can happen there. This is um. And moving as fast as they can, but responsibly and making sure that you're leveraging like all the grants and the TLT dollars and all of that. Um, since we know that there isn't just buckets of money sitting in the general fund.
It's not a.
There's not, yeah.
So uh, the ADA, it will be ADA accessible, which is in the bid for this remodel, and so there will be additional parking out here. That we can keep that open with um, you know, correct blockage while we work on this, we can still have the visitor center open, I think, is one of the questions. And I think what you're asking, um, Councilor Jones is. Can we get this done and then add the EV later? Is that, so we can?
Just like, is it gonna be staged or are we gonna wait for the whole thing, including the EV setup?
Open.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
The the biggest. Issue. That needs to be done rapidly would be upgrading the parking lot.
ADA, yeah, and you have to do that for the whole thing to.
Well. We don't have to. But we'd be losing parking in front of the visitor center if it was open. If we didn't do it then. I mean. The grades, which also includes the retaining wall by the. The box car and everything else, cause we have to put that in at the same time, but. The, you know, that regrading element. To make the whole thing accessible is the biggest.
And it will still be accessible.
That we have, we have to spend money without grants funding it. We need to do fairly rapidly. The rest, any of the other elements can be. Placed without. Major interruption of the visitor center.
The other good news is we have a city administrator who I like to call the Grant Whisperer, who has found. Multi millions of dollars, no pressure. But uh, I know you're, you and the staff are aggressively going after every dime out there.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All three of us worked on one week, four last, so we continue to. Go after. And and there's a couple others, you know, so we just continue to apply for them. Um, these type grants are highly competitive, and so uh, so we're just aggressively trying to bring in what we can.
In the um, and so al- also looking forward, like, can you imagine the space? Is it something where you're thinking there could be potential, like a Saturday market type of event in there? Is that when you're thinking about power and all that, is that? Are you? Engineering it so that there could be vendors of some sort if there was a festival?
Well, initially, until we regrade the parking lot and. The little. Things that are a little out of sequence is obviously if we put. The EV in right away.
Mm hmm.
Or bringing power, a lot of power. It's easy to stick a sub panel and feed anything you want at that point. Oh, that's in phase three. So as it sits right now. Is there's information centers opening first, there is power there.
Mm hmm.
We can set temporary power up. But uh. You know, a full. At full completion, there should be plenty of power. We'll have a panel, but making the decision on EV. At full completion, there should be plenty of power. We'll have a panel, but making the decision on EV. Specifically, cause we're gonna have to bring in power for that, that being exterior. Panel that we could pull conduits into the park for the stage, we can, you know, the other issue is the restrooms themselves, how are we gonna feed that? But as we regrade the parking lot, we'll be laying conduit. To feed those and figure out how to feed those issues for a centralized panel somewhere. There could be a temporary set for a while to do such events, um, should this thing be states no longer element of time.
Counselor Nordoff?
One thing I don't see is a water fountain. Like a bubbler, uh, you know, they're cast iron, painted cast iron, they're almost indestructible. And we do not have one anywhere downtown except the California Street Boat Ranch, I think has one, has something, maybe attached to the rest.
It's included in the restroom project here, as we had indicated prior, you had brought this up before. And I had stated during that same meeting, that when the restrooms are built, the water fountain would be included. They're usually on the end. Um, so that is a feature that's going to be included in that restroom.
Nice. Well, that would hit the bill then, that's good to have one downtown, cause Grant Circle got built. Grant Circle, the fountain got added later. And the problem with having a drinking water fountain in Grand Circle is for some reason it was built without any drain lines at all. So there's no place to, like, for over the overflow to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the bike rack and the bike repair station, we have one at the visitor center now and it gets used all the time. It's a great asset, yeah, and there'll be some benches and. And whatnot, so this is very conceptual, just overall, and then those little, little details like that can be added.
It would be nice to have one that you could fill water bottles with, like, kinda, so that bikers, you know, people on bicycles and stuff could. Get their. Fill and then be on their way, so.
And then these sort of spots end up becoming on maps, like, I don't know if you, you, we're definitely on some sort of map for the, the. Bike routes, because like you see him coming down Marion and stopping at Safeway and they get lists of like, this is a good place for a water stop, this is a good place for a public bathroom, so. Having another space like this for filling up waters and bathrooms and bike racks is. Um, I think you guys are just really on the right track for this and I can't wait to see it move forward. Love it, if it wasn't three years, so everybody.
We'll do our best.
Dream of grant dollars tonight, right?
Yeah, we really try to think of making a one-stop.
Yeah.
For not only, you know, locals, but tourists as well, and something that's visually pleasing and. They wanna stop at, they just fly by, I mean, I'm down there, that's my office, and they just fly by all the time, they have nowhere to stop, and so. Um, sometimes it's like, what, RVs right downtown? Yes, yes, because they can actually see it, if they miss a turn, they can go around the block and come back and. So it's a really exciting development and we've been working hard on it, so, yeah, your feedback is great, thank you.
All right, thank you. We look forward to continuing hearing more. I know that the, there is some things for this week's agenda for the visitor center. And that is going to be done here in a little bit, are we?
Yes, Ralph will be back.
Okay, Ralph will be back, don't go too far.
Yes, thank you.
And I know we have one of our business owners, is he going to be, he was raising his hand back there, is he coming up next, or?
I.
Did you have a question?
No, later.
Look, I'll be back.
What's that?
Yeah.
Will the restrooms be open twenty-four seven?
No.
Question, no. No, sounds like no, okay.
We don't do that in our parks.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going back to the agenda that was three town square conceptual design. Remember that word conceptual, right? Nothing was there in stone conceptual design. Um, very exciting information, and number four is, um, this is a work session item from Counselor Nordoff. Drainage path from McPherson Avenue, just and, um, McPherson Avenue discussion. And I believe you have some paperwork here. Um, and then we also have our public works director that can give us an update on that. Is that okay if I have him give the update first, or tell us?
I would like to speak first.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead. And, sorry, he's already here, so this is good, he can answer any questions.
Sure. Okay, so I handed out a packet to everybody. Um, and these are all people, the signatures are all from people on my block, fifteen hundred block. So, um, just in review. The street had been two lanes wide of concrete with street trees, and at some point in the last fifty years, the street was widened. Now, a normal residential street. For our development requirements is thirty-six feet, plus then your curb, your, your gutter and your curb line and maybe your sidewalk. This street was widened to fifty-five feet, as was McPherson, as was Union. Now. Um, and, and everybody's kinda used to that now, but there's one block that remains unpaved, it's north of Colorado. It's the area that borders the tennis court. And. There was no provision as to continue to allow to drain that down McPherson. It drains down Meade, but mid-block on Meade, it changes direction because the street's not graded properly. As it just wasn't, it wasn't built to standards, I guess. And it crosses mid-block and so the. The, the, um, storm drain in the area is at the south end of, of that block of Meade, but it's on the north. It's on the northeast corner. And the flow coming from McPherson down Colorado, down Meade, crossing the street. Does not come anywhere near that storm drain. It goes down, um, Florida and hits a storm drain down at Monroe. Now, that's been that way for decades. However. Because the street is not graded properly, you have sheet flow mid-block that affect a couple of neighbors and myself. Because when we go to get in our cars, everybody kinda lost a lot of space for a driveway when the street was widened. Like twenty feet beyond the normal residential width. And we are standing in running water, you know, over an inch deep in a downpour. Trying to get into our cars and, 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 you know, start our cars and leave. So we're in, we're in the gutter. We're hitting gutter flow because the drainage does not stay at the curb. And what the effect of that is besides getting totally wet feet before you even get in your car is that, um, it's. Sheet flow erodes the asphalt off the top of the aggregate, and then the wear and tear from vehicle traffic. Um, then takes out your aggregate, and so you'll see, uh, the first shot is looking north. Um, and the second shot is the condition of the pavement. And.
This is, um, is this right in front of your house?
Uh, it is, yeah, my neighbor's car is parked ahead there, this is in front of my house, and you can see where, where. The, to the left, you have the concrete underlayment and the asphalt on top of it, so that's more stable. Than just. Where it became asphalt over, I don't know if they put a sub, sub base and a base down as it's normal, or if they just. Put some gravel down, put the asphalt. So the sheet flow from this, you know, uncontrolled. Drainage is, is kinda breaking up the pavement. Now, I understand we're doing the stormwater master plan, great, that's great. I'm just. I just thought. You know, I could have waited on this, I've talked to Ralph before about it, but. I bought a, a five-gallon can of asphalt and, and I'm just thinking, well, if there, you know, could there be any way that. That area could be, get some, I could put the asphalt on it and put some aggregate on it, just as a preservative, so it doesn't break up any further. Or, you know, and the city understandably is, is looking long-term and what's the best way to handle this? Um, but I heard that, well, you know, we, you know, it, it still goes down to the storm drain at the end of. At the end of, uh, the block. No, it doesn't, it crosses the street, it doesn't go anywhere near that storm drain. I mean, there are different possibilities, put a, put a little berm at the top of Colorado, keep it on. You know, the curb side of McPherson where it rounds the corner, it comes down and hits that storm drain in Florida and Meade. Or, you know, some other control, I, I don't know, that's for public works to decide, I just. It's like, it's gonna rain real hard and I, it's gonna be another, you know, I've dealt with it for sixteen years, I could deal with it longer, but I just wanted to. Say that these particular streets were not built to standards, and, and this is an example, so that's all I got.
All right, we've got our public works director here that can speak to the stormwater drainage master plan and the process and. Answer any questions.
Basically, council has, it is an issue, uh, what the issue. Counselor Nordoff has identified is a real issue, this is not. Um, a conceptual thing or an objective or a subjective. Thing, it's an issue. Uh, we had. Previously briefly discussed. The option of putting a berm to direct it down McPherson. Which I'm against for a couple reasons. Primarily, we're just diverting, primarily, we're just diverting. A problem, uh, well. A speed bump or a barrier.
Thank you.
That forces drainage down. McPherson, this is being produced at the intersection or not necessarily produced, but starts, the issue starts at the intersection of Colorado and. McPherson. Uh, by. Directing it down McPherson, we're changing the drainage path that exists now. Uh, we're giving somebody else a problem. And actually is against Oregon drainage law, because you, you have a right to drain where you naturally drain, you have liability the minute you change. Drainage from where it naturally drains to somewhere else, if it causes issues. Then the city's liable for it. So I'm against that option, I'm just, and Suzanne didn't bring that up this time, she's. Agreed with me on that. He had the do-nothing alternative, which. Basically. Means there's gonna be problems and it is eroding the asphalt and causing problems there. Um, he had two other options, basically, we can. And we are having it reviewed with our stormwater master plan, I've identified it to our consultants. Uh, we can wait till that item's complete. It. Will identify the problem and a possible solution for it and put dollars to it. That doesn't mean it's gonna be a high priority. Um, because we may have other bigger issues come out of the stormwater master plan. Or council can say it's a priority and fix it. That's basically your four options, um, cause council makes the priorities for staff, we can fix it. Prior to. Waiting for the stormwater master plan, but. I, I have suggested in the past to wait for the stormwater master plan and I have. I still, that's my favorite option, however, I will identify to everybody, but that doesn't necessarily make it a high priority item. Um, and it could be a list where this continues for another ten years till it's fixed. So.
Yeah.
It's up to council to decide how to proceed.
We've heard from Counselor Nordoff, so every counselor now has a time to speak before we would go back to a second person, so I'll just kinda go down the list and start with Counselor Shul.
When is our stormwater master plan? Do, we're like, whenever we're gonna get that information?
They have a twenty-four month completion period, which is October of next year.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, October next year, okay. Counselor Hamilton.
So if you were to go and fix this right now. When you do your master plan, there could be another. You might have to work on it in a different spot that would actually. You know what I'm saying? You don't fix the same spot twice.
The solution, you know, conceptually, the solution is to install a new. Storm sewer at the intersection of Colorado and Meade and extend the couch basin, cause it sheets flows across the street. At the intersection of Florida and Meade right now. As Counselor Nordoff identified. Their cast basins on the east side of Meade Street. This water sheet flows down to the west side, so it wraps clean down around the corner. Till it hits Monroe before it's actually. Removed. Also, the amount of typically three to four hundred foot. Spacing is the maximum. Of your drainage basin. Uh, street collection. And joining properties, there's about six or seven hundred feet of drainage that's. Currently running down there now, so this exceeds our standards if we were putting in a new system. There's no question there. But if we were to fix it today. Uh, for about thirty thousand dollars, we could run a. Storm sewer, a new storm sewer at the intersection of Meade and Colorado. And pick up the water that's flowing there intercepted before it runs. Down around the corner.
I guess what I'm asking is if you do your master plan and we get done with that. Would that also maybe show that we could, we would need to do other repairs or?
Oh, the master plan is gonna show, uh.
You know what I mean, that maybe instead of, we, we wait for the plan to come out. And we might fix that, and it might tie in with this, and it might tie this into here. Wouldn't it?
Potentially, there's really not, uh. A system, a drainage system that would. I'm not gonna say this is a micro. Site, but there's pretty good drainage around Simpson Park itself and. Actually, at McPherson. Drainage goes to the east or drainage goes to the west. So I wouldn't anticipate additional drainage problems that would create a bigger system. If we evaluated the, uh. When the master plan's complete, that we would end up with a bigger system that ties into this, and by. Installing a system, we would have to just redo it. I, I think that's what your question was.
Right, like we were, you know.
Yeah.
We are getting close to exceeding our time on this, um, agenda item, but I wanna hear from both of you. Counselor Groban, did you have any?
I was just curious about of the known issues that we have around the city that are like this, that fit into the master plan. Um, how many are we juggling and how is this? Like, just a guess, just, just a guess to me.
Well.
You said this is thirty thousand, we have. You know, ten million that need to be addressed quickly.
First issues are flooding a property rather than flooding our street prioritization wise. You know, we're creating damage to somebody's property, not our own, they're gonna be higher priority. And then we have. Honestly, a lot of. Material that's gonna be identified where. We're close to failure on primarily, we have a lot of old CMP pipe out there, which is rusting away.
Yeah.
I don't know, I can't give you a.
Yeah.
A real educated guess on what's gonna show up there, but.
I'm just really hesitant, I, I mean, this is great information and I believe that this is a problem, I absolutely believe this has been a problem for a long time. Um, I don't. Feel like. Doing this though without knowing relative, the other bits and pieces makes sense. Unfortunately, I, I just, I just don't think it makes sense outside the context of the rest of the city. For similar.
So. My, my concern is we have ten thousand two hundred other. Residents in North Bend, and I think we need to consider what the public works directors. Expertises and. And, and follow through with the master plan, if we. Pick our streets to move to the top of the list. That could be really problematic and look like we're using our position, and I wouldn't wanna put Counselor Nordoff in that position. Where somebody would accuse her to use her position of council to move something to the priority, so those are sort of the things that I'm thinking of too. Looks like it is a big problem, it's very bad.
Absolutely, it looks like it's.
Along with all the other hundreds of thousands of.
Yeah.
How many miles of street, I'm still talking, um, how many miles of street do we have in the city?
Well, paved sixty-seven, we have twenty-eight miles of storm sewer.
Okay, so, so. You know, it's just, it's like the, sometimes we'll hear from. Individuals about the street in front of their house, the wall needs to be paved, there's a process to go through that, so.
What I'm also hearing is this is in, thi- this information is in. What the people doing the master plan are examining, this isn't like.
It would, is it on, is it, as you're going through the master plan, will there end up being like a list? Of sort of like. Every time we get in money, we're gonna start with the ones that are like the most urgent, is it, cause I think that the, is that sort of how the streets are, right? You have a grading system.
We have, it will identify problem issues and provide us with a, forgive me, I can't remember if I asked for a five-year or ten-year. Capital improvement plan based on our funding. Um, based on the priority project, it doesn't mean. That other projects won't be funded down the road, but it'll give us a. A list. For at least five years and I can, forgive me, I can't remember whether I asked for a five or a ten. These are the highest priority fixes, um, which our money would go to first, or the money in funding, we have. Other projects, doesn't mean they won't be listed, they're just not listed on the CIP as a priority.
Counselor Nordoff, can you? Counselor Nordoff, can you do kind of a wrap-up comment since we've exceeded the time?
Yes, yes, okay.
Uh, first, if I donate the materials, could I use my five gallons of asphalt? For the pavement that, that's in this picture here, it's in front of my house to kind of put to a temporary seal? Is that possible? And the second one, is there ever any plan to put gutters on the streets that don't have gutters? Cause that would have helped if we'd had gutters.
Do we, we need to have our attorney chime in on that when you're having a counselor offer their. Out to our city.
It was suggested, it was suggested.
Okay, I'm just, like, that's getting into something that, I don't know if.
It's suggested by staff.
The, so I do have Mark Wolf on the line, our city attorney. I don't know if you caught that better. Donating the materials, but I don't know. You wanted to speak first, Mr. Wolf, or if have our public works director speak on that?
Uh, Ralph, go ahead.
We do not allow people to, we're responsible for street maintenance. We do not allow people to do the work in the street. However, any donated materials. Could be scheduled in place. It's a request like anybody else. This isn't a whole lot of work to. To place, it's a basically a seal code, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I bought it from.
It's a liquid asphalt.
Who's had asked, it's for streets.
It's a sealant, paint it black, but it does seal it. I, I color painted black, cause it's not, it's not a structural supplement. It seals cracks, keeps the drainage.
Right.
Okay, all right. I know that we have some other things on the agenda. Is there any direction from the council on this matter?
Yes.
Okay. I'm hearing a consensus to wait for the master plan, so thank you for your information. All right. Um, so let's see, number five on the agenda is review the city council agenda for September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, or yeah. And I've got, got, we've got two things. We got the council agenda and then we'll look at the urban renewal agency agenda. So Mr. Millar, do you wanna walk us through the council agenda?
Assistant Mayor, you'll start with ceremonial. This is a rescheduled five-year of service. Uh, so Mr. Tanner will be here from the library. On your consent counter, you have the. Uh, normal approval of the minutes. This is September thirteenth. Uh, if there's any issues, concerns, um, this would be the time to bring them forth. Uh, next you have, uh, the federal or as we say the FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency Grant. Uh, this is a grant that, uh, the fire department has applied for multiple times. Uh, it has received funding for the thirty-two. Self-contained breathing apparatus, um, otherwise referred to as SCUBA. And so this is us accepting the grant. Um, so that, uh, we can move forward with process of, uh, eventually purchasing it. The, um, uh, North Bend Public Library exterior painting, again, previously. Uh, budgeted, um, this is approved, uh, the quote for the external painting, uh, for the doors and the railings. And then you have a revision to the North Bend Public Library Exhibits Policy. Um, this is policy that's generated. Um, at a higher level than makes its way all the way down to us. Um, so, um, uh, we're being asked to, uh. Adopt, uh, the local exhibits policy as local policy. And then last but not least, you have the purchase of the camera carrier for the wastewater closed circuit TV. You may recall a few years ago, we had, uh, overhauled and renovated. Um, the van, um, this is, uh, the camera carrier, um, for the, uh, closed TV circuit system. Um, if there's any questions on any of the items on the consent calendar, um, staff is here that can answer any of those questions.
Well, I like the, the, the free money that we accept the grants for, that's good. I'm, I'm all for that. Counselor Jones?
Is the, is the SCUBA, is that like SCUBA diving or is that for, um, the firemen to go into the fire? Or is that, that's what it's for?
Yeah, it's going to fire, um, SCUBA, SCUBA, so the tanks themselves. Um, but yeah, these are fire rated, um, but, um. Uh, the, the, the term self-contained breathing apparatus, um, is used by different industries, so yes.
And it's, and our current stuff is twenty years old. Wow, okay. Thank you. That's terrific.
Okay. Um, no further questions about the consent calendar, then what else we got on here?
Right, from there you'll go to public comment. Um, and then we have a, uh, public hearing, so at this point we'll ask, um, staff to come forth. They'll talk about the vacation of the alleyway. Um, that is. Here in our locality.
And can I, um, take a moment here to have, uh, you or the city recorder explain to, cause I think, um, Counselor Hamilton is the newest. Counselor about when we do the public hearing and the first reading only and explain that. So we don't get in a situation where we're reading the whole thing.
So. Per, per our code, the council has an option to basically pass a ordinance. Um, that is unanimous, uh, in one seating and then it is a thirty-day implementation unless it's an emergency ordinance. In this case, it's not an emergency. Um, if a particular counselor, um, objects, um, to first reading, um, uh, or. Decides not to vote forth, um, we, uh, will pass it on to the next meeting. Um, if you're unanimous on first reading, instead of having the city attorney, uh, read through verbatim the entire ordinance. Um, it can be done as a title only, which is basically the top portion to introduce it. Um, so, um, it's, uh, very easy to make a mistake. Um, it depends whether or not you want bedtime reading or not. Uh, we can read to you and at the end we can wake you up. We have to read along ordinance. Uh, that's the best way to explain it, if you will.
And so when we, when tomorrow night, when we have a motion to read by first title only, doesn't mean that you were necessarily like voting yes or no at that point. It's just on. How we wanna present the ordinance. Good way to say that. Okay, yes, Counsel.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I understand what you're saying. So, so when this is a request, a petition to vacate an unimproved portion, this, this means. The city is going to relinquish their property rights over the alley, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so they're gonna do something with it. It'll now be a part of their properties or whatever. Okay.
City planner, take it away. We'll hear some more from him.
Okay.
So this one is relatively simple vacation. It's, I mean, as far as they go, um. It's in block ten of the Shakers addition to Central Place, which is. Uh, between Cedar and Ash on the east and west and Kenyon and Wait on the north and south. And the applicant has met all the statutory requirements, proper notice and. And has been mailed and published. Uh, no objections have been raised. We have support from staff. We have support from the. Utility companies in the area that none of them have any utilities in the, in the alleyway. And, uh, the planning commission has made a recommendation to city council for the approval of this vacation ordinance. And there was no objections raised during that public hearing either. So yeah, as Counselor Jones was mentioning, we basically just relinquish our property rights to that alleyway. And get that property back on the tax rolls and. Property lines just extend to center of alleyway and it goes away. So property owners can use it, enjoy it as they already are. And yeah, so nothing materially will change on the ground with this ordinance. It's just a formality so that. Property owners can actually utilize the alleyway for like building setbacks and stuff.
So the alleyway will still exist, it just won't be.
The alleyway will go away.
Okay.
It will cease to exist after, after this ordinance, if you choose to approve it.
Okay.
Okay. Do we expect anybody to speak or at, at the public hearing tomorrow night or?
I never heard anybody.
Okay.
And then they can have a staycation on their vacated property.
Right.
And we know, so this is just to understand the process. We're talking about seventy percent consent of the affected owners. Including also all the owners that are next to this little piece have to say yes.
Correct.
And then there's some other way to determine affected.
So yeah, so four hundred feet are either terminus and two hundred feet wide.
Okay.
And that, those are the affected property owners. So we have to have, like you mentioned, a hundred percent of the adjoining property owners, everybody touches it. And then seventy percent of the total property owners, so including that affected area.
And, um, seventy percent is either you hit a hundred and thirty percent said no, or you only hit seventy. Percent of that and it, it's just a threshold you'd have to reach, you don't know.
Correct, yeah, it's the statutory requirement.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
All right.
We'll be ready.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Right, and then, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, the next one is also being presented by our city planner, which is number seven, the letter of support for the DLV.
Yes.
CD Technical Assistance Grant.
Okay.
So, you said you like free money.
I love.
That's what I'm here for tonight. So, this is a two-part proposal. One, part one is to support an initiative. To stand up Oregon's, uh, very first land bank authority authorized under House Bill twenty-four, or twenty-seven thirty-four, uh, from twenty fifteen. So land banks have been done and proven to, and have been proven to work and to revitalize areas. In the community that are underserved and underutilized. In New York, Michigan and Ohio, there is state legislation that enables land banking. Authorities to acquire, redevelop, rehabilitate and mitigate brownfield sites. Furthermore, our very own city administrator has experience with land baking authorities in Georgia. Who similarly rehab properties that were in effect non-contributing members, uh, of the community. In Oregon, the state legislature passed House Bill twenty-seven thirty-four in twenty fifteen. Which enables cities to, cities and counties to establish a land bank authority within their jurisdiction to address brownfield sites. And brownfield sites are defined as having actual or perceived environmental hazards that complicate development or redevelopment. So these hazards can look like asbestos, lead paint, dry cleaner sites, industrial sites, or sites contaminated with petroleum product. Products via underground storage tanks or similar devices. The goal of House Bill twenty-seven thirty-four was to empower smaller jurisdictions who had or have declining industry presence. And to take back land and reactivate spaces that could serve the community better. So the benefits are twofold. We get to rehabilitate unsightly and potentially hazardous properties and return them to the tax rolls. Um, in a better condition than they currently sit. In the realm of public property, the city typically gets stuck with properties that have issues, um, be that contamination and natural hazards. Are the two big ones. And what this initiative does is allows the creation of an entity that can do something about these properties and rehabilitate them by mitigating. Or redeveloping and ensuring that the right kind of development goes back in its place. So that would be. Things like affordable housing and middle housing options, um, reactivating. Commercial storefronts and, and making the active members of our street fronts around North Bend. And there are additional, additional properties that we presented to you roughly this time last year. That are abandoned and potentially hazardous to the community. We would aim to capture these properties in the scope of creation of the land bank. Uh, of the land bank study. Um, which brings me to the second point of this evening. Before you and your packet is a letter of support, um, to go after grant funding for this initiative. We've put together most of the application and we just need your support. And so we're hoping that we can get that. Um, so with your support, we have the opportunity to cement North Bend as a leader in Oregon by accomplishing something that's. Never been done in the state under this legislation. With all that said, we hope that you're able to support this initiative of creating Oregon's first land bank. Authority here in North Bend in conjunction with DLCD's technical assistance.
Okay, questions?
Yes.
So, um, I always like to try to like. Reiterate, like, hear what you say, and then if I'm trying to explain this to. A fifth grader or. Or myself, anyone. In simplest terms, like if I was trying to explain to somebody else what the land bank is, um, you look at these dilapidated properties. And like you had mentioned brownfields or there's asbestos issues, at that point have they, um, defaulted on? Their taxes?
So, part of what we're aiming to do is. Uh, you know, kind of capture these broadly, so be it buy it back on taxes. Place a lien for code violations or purchase outright if we have the funding to do that.
Got it, okay. So it could be in various stages of abandoned owner, ownership. To back taxes, to track it, maybe somebody's passed away and tracking them down. So there could be a variety of reasons why they're in that state.
Yes.
Okay, and then the, then, like, we're all, right? Okay, so then, and then the, um, and then the city of North Bend. We work with the county?
You would create, basically this would enable your own land bank authority with its own governance.
Okay.
To manage it.
And so like, if, so now when that happens, that goes to the county, right? Those properties.
If, if it is a tax issue, it goes to the county usually in year four.
Okay.
You're always allowed to pay up once. So once you get beyond three years, usually on the fourth, it'll go to a tax sale. Um, if there is, let's say it's an OREO, uh, other real estate owned on, uh, the, say a banks. Or let's say the state has it because it, it, it reverted back to the state or it's, um. Someone's died and no one can figure out probate and so it's a silent title issue that has to be, um. Resolve, or it's a property that just absolutely is absolutely lighted, derelict and otherwise. And they want to look at condemnation on it. There are multiple of how. Right now, only for taxes does it go to the county. The county then sells it. Um, and for whatever value over and above taxes goes back to whoever is actually the rightful owner.
Okay, and so, um, and then, then, so if the, we go through the process, the land bank is created. There's properties identified and then they're. Acquired by the city of North Bend, then.
Not, not the city.
Not the city, the land bank. Yes, then the land bank would, would own them. And then could do different things with them, but it's very specific things that they can do.
And so we could, you know, rehabilitate derelict properties, we could mitigate brownfield sites. We could work with private developers in a pri- public-private partnership. Um, you know, the land bank authority with these private developers to. You know, put in affordable housing or something, you know, that's benefiting the community and get it back on the tax rolls. Um, there's a number of things that we can do and we're aiming to be pretty broad with.
Yeah, so I know there was, do you care if I go to Counselor Schultz first and then back this way? Okay, okay, are we looking to get the grants to start up the land bank authority? Like, if we don't get the grants, then it wouldn't happen?
That's correct, correct.
Okay.
So that, so today's task would be coming to a consensus for a letter, well, or we would vote on the letter of support.
Tomorrow you'd actually. And Madam, Madam Mayor, if I would, so to give you a clear, concise. So. Derelict properties, blighted properties, brownfield properties, et cetera, they, under the definition, they can all be looked at as sort of. Hazardous contaminated sites, cause of, you know, lead paint, uh, lead poisoning, pipes of color. If the city or the URA were to acquire a brownfield. Um, site, that, that liability transfers to the city, to the taxpayers. It is not under a land bank. Um, and so the state has created this mechanism, um, interesting enough, um. Uh, from east coast, cause usually policy goes from west coast to east coast, but they reached out very aggressively to east coast. Um, looking for a mechanism in this state. Where they can actually rehabilitate, uh, properties, go back on tax rolls, but not put the liability back on the shoulders. Of, uh, taxpayers, because let's say that in twenty years, um, something happens, um, and they all of a sudden find out there's a soil issue. Brownfield follows, and so that's why when you opened up, um, with the fact that usually it's the properties that nobody wants for certain reasons. Falls back. And then you have to figure out how to clean it up and there's mechanisms. Um, and funds and tax increments put aside to help the land bank address this. Um, and be able to rehabilitate properties.
Okay. All right, I'll go down here to Counselor Garbo and Schultz.
The liability is the physical, uh, land bank itself, which has, uh, is indemnified, um, under state law. So it actually has, um, shield law. So therefore, as long as you follow all of the brownfield guidelines for cleanup, there is no liability. Well, if you want to sue someone, that's fine, but it's also why you have properties that aren't getting cleaned up and they're just sitting idle.
Set up this renewable land bank. And we can go out. As a land bank, the city of North Bend, myself, it would be.
Cause otherwise, nobody else will clean it up or rehabilitate it or put it on the tax rolls. Therefore, you'll be stuck with a piece of property that's never going to generate income and.
Let's say the land bank buys it, sells it to X, Y, Z person.
And they find out fifteen years down the road, there was a forty thousand gallon fuel tank down there. Now it's a big brownfield site.
Well, that, that won't happen because under brownfield, you have to go through phase one, phase two testing, all of that to rehabilitate. That's the whole purpose of the land bank, so.
And ten years down the road, there's something that is. Determined that there's an issue for. Usability of property for it once, I'm stuck.
Yes.
The person who buys it is. Well, I mean, we don't, you know.
Would you prefer your taxpayers to be on the hook? I mean, that's, that's, that's the alternative. Otherwise, there's no mechanism to properly clean them up, and that's.
So the person that's purchasing it then would have, they would do their due diligence, right? They would make sure that they would.
That's the purpose of the land bank. The land bank has to follow very rigorous brownfield. That's why they don't fund the whole thing. Is you go through the whole environmental process. Um, it's almost like when we do. A new road and have to go through, uh, a NEPA environmental, uh, process. You have to follow that. Um, there's a lot of folks that cut corners and so they'll buy a property and then sell it. So let's say that we bought a property and we didn't do our due diligence, um, we're on the hook, the taxpayer's on the hook. If you actually do, for instance, like we did with the annex, you go and you involve, um, the state brownfield and you, you get that. And then you do the phase one, phase two, okay? If you eventually flip that property, you have to have the environmental E S A studies. That's why most banks won't transfer properties unless an E S A was done within a, uh, twelve-month period, for instance. We're applying for a grant now on the annex and they won't even accept our current, um, E S As, our environmental, um. Uh, studies, um, uh, assessments because, um, uh, they were done two years ago, for instance. So we have to update those for the liability purposes. So just, you know, cost us, whereas under, um, land banks, um. As long as you follow that process, you don't have to continue going back to the property to redo the same studies. Where you haven't done anything else different to the property.
Let me ask one question because he said phase one and phase two, and so just so like, and so like those type of environmental studies, those are like.
They're like. Soil samples and, you know, you have an engineer here who's well-versed. Um, but, but we've done them already on existing properties and.
Those are, it's not like your common surveyor coming out to like, take a look, like, these are extensive.
Yeah.
You know. People who know much more about this.
Their reports are thick.
Yeah.
They, they do a lot of work.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just have a comment. I hear what you're saying. On the one hand, on the other hand, just looking at this. Outline, I'm going to argue that the largest corporations in the world don't have to take this much responsibility for the projects that. Whale on rural communities around the world. This, this is much more responsibility than some of the extraction processes that certainly the oil and gas industry. It doesn't make rural, you know, so I'm going to say, well. I, I'm going to give this a bye.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, so, um, so tomorrow night we would vote on whether or not we would have, basically at this point, it's a letter of support saying, go after the grant to set up the land bank.
And, you know, when throughout the process. There'll be, most likely be municipal code changes and updates that will come before you. Which you can say yea or nay, and you see, you're gonna have, you know, it's not like you say yes and then you relinquish control. There's going to be a lot of. Involvement throughout the process.
I know our city administrator has seen this work really effectively in other states and it's, um. It'd be great to really be one of the first in Oregon to bring something like this here, take care of some of these dilapidated properties, so.
Yeah, the encouraging thing is, is. Really, um, um, and, and so the state, this, this Oregon have been watching what we're doing here. Um, uh. In North Bend with some of these properties, and as you know, we've been through environmental studies on multiple properties. We, it's, it's. It's the blade of properties that we end up with, and so, um, uh. They have made me aware and, and had probably a year and a half ago of this opportunity. We were just not positioned well enough yet. To move forward on it. Um, there is, um, uh, foremost attorney in the state, which, which I made an introduction. Um, uh, and, and advised, um. Our city attorney that we're going to reach out. We had, um, great conversations with them. Um, and, um, he is, um, interested that if we, uh, move forward and we get the grant. Then he wants to work with us to help set it up and, um, has already told us that he would, um. Uh, make sure that his rate is within, um, um, the, the confines of the budget. Um, because, uh, he said he makes, uh, four hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour. I'd love to make part, I'm sure all you would love to make part of nine bucks there. I was like, yeah. There's some people that, that's all they make in a week. So, all right, so thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you to our city planner.
Thank you.
Is that, did we have a few other things on the agenda?
So, um, from there, um. Uh, there's no executive session, city administrators report, committee reports, council, and then we will be moving. Um, uh, we are moving, if it hasn't already happened with the twenty-four hour notice. We are moving number five on the U R A agenda. To the city council agenda tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, on advice of our city attorney. Um, so number five is the contingent award for contract for the visitors information center remodel.
Are we going to make that eight tomorrow?
And so we'll make that, I was going to make that number twelve, um. Um, because we don't have other business, so I was going to make it the new number twelve.
Okay.
Um, which is kind of what I've done in the past where I just go ahead and list it out.
Got it.
Um, and so, uh, we can go back, so that's all that we have under the regular. But I just want to say we can address it when we go under the U R A, but know that tomorrow we will have it on the regular agenda.
Got that, okay. So then that would take care of the city council meeting?
Yes.
So shall we go ahead and walk through the urban renewal agency packet?
All right, same thing. You have your minutes from September twelfth. Uh, you have a word of paving project for Washington Street at, um. The Washington Street parking lot. This is your, uh, parking lot that's, um, uh, adjacent to the former Chickarelli's. Um, uh, which has been, um, our, uh, potpourri haven. Um, and we have our public works director, if you have questions, um, on the bid, but he is here. Looking at the same job. Oh, you mean how close they were? Yeah, it's kind of amazing, but. Yeah, that's all legit bid.
I don't know if there's any other questions, but you're absolutely correct.
Parking lots, parking lot.
Yeah, it's kind of them.
Yeah, I did not have any questions. Did any other counselors have any questions?
All right, so the, uh, recommendation then tomorrow will be to move forward with, thank you, uh, Ralph. Next is, um, uh, we have, uh, you may recall that I brought forth that we were creating a micro mural grant application.
Yeah.
Uh, process, um. Uh, we have, uh, our first applicant for that. Um, under the Urban Renewal Agency, and so I believe we. Um, I have Miss Stephanie that's going to come up, and then I believe we have the applicant with us as well who wants to join us. And then, uh, we'll go ahead and present this. Um, this is, uh, uh, capped, um, at five thousand dollars per micro grant. Um, it is a budgeted item and the mural grant, the murals, um, are part of your, uh, urban renewal plan. So that. Uh, Miss Stephanie?
Hello, Madam Mayor and Council again. I am here with the owner.
Harold Midget.
And, uh, he owns Books by the Bay, uh, the business and the building is his ownership, which is east across from the. Library right down here on Sherman Avenue, and so he has gone out and received three bids towards this project. You should have it in your packet. This is a painting done by Don McMichael, who is a local artist, and he has also provided a, um. Acceptance of use for the artwork for him, for whoever the bid goes to, to complete his artwork. And he has, uh, come in with three bids. They all exceed ten thousand dollars. Therefore, the match would be. Um, the cap of five thousand and allocated dollar, dollars from the urban renewal for this project. And, uh, do you want to say anything else about your? The artwork or?
I'm, I'm curious, why, did this speak to you? Like, why was there a story behind this piece of art or why you wanted to? Do this piece, if I don't know if anybody can see at home, but it's really cool, called the Whale Hucker, right?
Right.
And do you go by Howard or Harold?
Harold.
Okay.
I've known Don McMichael for thirty-five years. Uh, I've owned the building for twenty-four years, talking multiple times about him doing the artwork. On the building. And he claims that he's not physically able to do it, so we've, uh, approached third parties. But he's in agreement because he wants to see that mural every time he drives into town. And I think it would be a great presentation for the city. I personally love it. I think it would improve my property value. And since it's right on Highway one oh one south, I think it would be. Attractive and help people slow down before they get to the new, uh, visitor center.
Yeah, we're going to be taking pictures in front of all of these murals. We're going to have to have do a mural pamphlet at some point.
Yes, I do actually have that planned, and the, the idea behind the micro mural project is, uh, the five thousand cap is to really spread the artwork around.
Yeah.
Uh, we've allocated twenty thousand dollars for that, so essentially for projects for that, um, allocated dollars. So this is really great to have our first applicant come. Obviously, the project is a lot more than five thousand, but if we can contribute in some way. Um, so my staff recommendation is to award the five thousand dollars towards, um, his project.
Thank you. Very cool. Wow. Thank you for being an invested business owner in our community.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for us at all?
No, is it timeframe? If this was approved, how quickly do you think this could be, could go up?
This year.
This year sometime, as in twenty twenty-three this year, as in this upcoming year.
Weather permitting, of course.
Yeah, I, I believe we could start soon.
Very, that's very exciting. Yes, oh, and it's, okay.
Did they give you an overall, um, measurement of? It's pretty large, it's.
I have not gone out there with a tape measure.
It fits our, we have a seven foot by ten foot, um, requirement for the projects, and so it does exceed that. But it would be a pretty large mural on the side of the building. Um, the west and south side of the building is brick. This side is stucco, so it's a nice clean slate to be able to do the, um, the painting on there. And you said that you'll have lighting as well, so it'll, it'll be, you know, visible and, uh, you know, easier to see at night.
Yeah, wow, love it. Wonderful beautification. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, Madam Mayor, as I, um, uh, stated, the number five is going to move to.
Yeah.
The regular city council, regular session tomorrow. Uh, this is the continued award for contract for the visitor information center, so we'll go ahead and discuss it now since it's a joint meeting, but it will be on the city council. And so at this time, you have, uh, Miss Stephanie and Mr. Ralph again, who's been, uh. And then, um, actually, uh, Derek, you worked a lot on this project, did you not? You might as well come on up too.
We don't have any.
Um, it should be on page seventeen in your U R A.
So U R A. There they are, okay. Okay, and this is for the visitor's center.
Phase one.
Okay. Thank you, okay.
I can't say honorable mayor on this case, I guess it's, uh.
You are a.
Commissioners.
Commissioners.
Commissioners at, at this point, uh. City staff put together a. Set of contract documents for remodeling the seven forty-five. California Avenue structure, which was Stevens and Coffee. Um, their model includes primarily ADA access. Uh, new flooring. And some minor amendments, but primarily it's, uh, opening it up for ADA access. And spursing up the building, but it's, uh, which includes ADA bathrooms, a ramp. So when you look at the scope, it's not, uh, significant building remodeling, um, but. Visitors Information Center countertops, opening up the interior walls so that they. What the visitors see, there's more space for exhibits and that type of thing, and ADA access. Our estimate for the project was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We received bids on September twentieth. Uh, we received three bids. There were two minor bid informalities included in the bids from two of the contractors. The little bid was Z Taro Construction, um, who had a minor bid informality on their bid. We may get into this a little bit further, but at this point. We're recommending staffs to recommend an award. Uh, of the bid to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, which was Z Taro Construction. Um, followed by Tom Gajewski Construction and Richard's Remodeling was the third bidder on the project. C Tarrel's from Roseburg. Tom Gajewski is from Coos Bay, um, and Richard's Remodeling is from Eugene.
And so, and the main items, um, that would be. Taking care of the ADA new flooring bathrooms. Is there any exterior facade, um, being done in this?
The only thing exterior other than. The doors and windows, it's primarily ADA, but we're centering the doors on existing. If you go into the building right now. If you look out the window, the, the Moorish columns or Spanish columns, I'm not sure, I'm not an architect. Is, that window centered on the column as you try to look out the window, um. So we're relocating on the east side, there'll be two new doors, both ADA accessible. And we're moving the window over, so it. Has a view of something other than a column eight feet away. Um, also on the exterior. Uh, other than connection for security cameras and that type of thing, we're putting in a disabled access ramp. Uh, there's one there that exists, but it's no way. No way meets the requirements, uh, so on the north end of the building, we're building a. Legal ADA access ramp to the structure. That's from the exterior. Uh, the interior is basically opening up. If you've been into the Stevens and Coffee office, they had a reception area and then they actually had a copy room and stuff. Uh, the overall, that'll be the visitors information center portion. The overall rooms roughly forty by sixteen. But it's, it's split right now from the reception area and the others, so that'll all be open. Uh, along with some security measures, new flooring. Um, new windows. New ADA accessible bathroom because it doesn't have an ADA accessible bathroom. New wiring for security and computers, new light, I have no new lighting, excuse me, um, but. And then a. Operational countertop for the. For the visitors information center. Uh, greeting area, um. And then when I say security, part of the security too, is there's, uh, we're putting doors, interior doors, so. Visitors only have access to that.
The main lobby.
The main lobby, not, not can't walk around or walk the back.
Where would the main door be? Because of the, the, the.
On the east side, similar, it's, it's just going to move slightly. There's actually going to be two, but. Just slightly to the north of the existing. Uh, door, only it'll be a full glass panel with side lights.
And that'll be two doors, so create a good flow, so you can, for instance, when we close our control events or other events where you come in and check in at the visitor's center. You'll have the two doors, you can come in one, go down the full length of the lobby and come out the other one to have a good flow and. Very nice at hand, you know, ADA accessible. Um, this does not include the outside columns or anything like that. That can always be taken care of later if we wish to move forward. This is to get us up and operational and to move into that building and get it going.
Okay, and so where would the, is the sign, like a sign that says North Bend Visitor Center included in this?
This is not. This is just for the building to be up and operational. Uh, there will be a new sign on the corner. And then we'll do some additional signing on the building.
And we're moving this to the, uh, regular agenda instead of the U R A. Because this portion is paid with the transient lodging tax, correct?
Uh, it's primarily because we, um, uh, creature habit. We've always advertised bids as city of North Bend, and so, uh, we didn't advertise it as the, uh, North Bend Urban Renewal Agency. And so since we actually had in. And so since we actually had in the budget two buckets um for phase one, phase two. Staff, we're going to swap, um, uh, originally U R A, we'll go ahead and use T L T. Move it over and so that everything matches, because otherwise it gets complicated, like who approves what? Because we just bid it, where's the contract that says the city can contract on its behalf? So on advice of the attorney, we're just going to throw it on that agenda. Uh, make sure that it's paid for with the T L T and we stay all within one bucket and there's no issue. And then phase two will come back under U R A, um, or we'll establish a formal agreement with the other agency. Y'all, with your other hat and and do it that way, so we just want to make sure that. Contractually and legally, we don't run afoul um with anything. It's. Part of that is the city council is a contract review board, not the U R A. Yeah. So you're you're established by ordinance as a reviewer of contract awards as a city council, not as a. Urban renewal agency.
The comment on here with the consideration of the informality, so if it was protested with this, any back.
Um, so on advice of council, we would prefer not to address any questions regarding any potential. Um, because of the process.
I think it's great, this is, you know, you think about whether urban renewal or transit lodging tax, I mean, these are. Great examples of how these dollars can be used to um, again, encourage you um, growth in the downtown and the visitors. Coming to the area and helping the businesses that are existing here already and encouraging new ones to come in, so it's a great use of the monies. Um, and so to not tomorrow night, you'll, the staff recommendation is to go ahead and to move forward with the um. Z Terrell and Sons Construction. Is the staff recommendation.
Correct, and we will swap out the U R A uh, uh, finance number for the T L T uh budget line item number.
Thank you.
And the reason the bid is contingent, I mean, the word is contingent, because there's a seven day bid protest period, should somebody choose to protest.
Great, okay.
So when is the start, start date on this?
Anticipated start date if awarded and no protest is received is approximately October twentieth. Because it takes about two to three weeks to get contracts, insurance signed and all that type of thing.
Moving pretty quickly.
Since that was a completion date of April first of twenty twenty-four, that we spoke of earlier, was for the in, for this, this.
This phase.
It's good. Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you, all right, on that executive uh director report. Hold a comment if any, and then adjournment, and it goes back to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so looking at tonight's um work session agenda, after going through both packets, the only thing left to do is. Adjourn, okay, six oh four, we adjourned.